I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Cosbun.
Here.
May we please have Reverend Jonathan Murkey come up and I'll stand for the invocation, followed by the salute of the flag.
Let us pray. For your goodness and grace, we give you thanks for the beauty of this season. We are grateful for our city. We give you thanks also and pray your blessing on our leadership be with our commissioners and our mayor as they lead us tonight. Give them wisdom and direction. Bless this meeting, bless our town in every way. Receive honor and glory, for we ask it in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Anybody from the public would like to comment on the agenda items for this regular session meeting on April 1st, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, and please limit your concerns to five minutes. Thank you.
Excuse me. When were we removed the resolution going to work session, didn't we?
Correct, it should just be crossed off.
So wasn't that a change?
Deputy clerk, there's a correction we removed. I have the wrong agenda. We tabled a...
Resolution 18X, 1810.
We tabled a resolution, correct?
Yes.
And, well, that's where you say changes to the agenda.
Oh, okay. So what do you want me to say?
Was to be removed.
Correction to the changes to the agenda.
Removed.
Oh, okay. It wasn't removed, it was tabled, I thought.
It was tabled, but the item on the agenda needs to be removed.
Okay. You want me to say that?
Yeah.
Resolution 10. Resolution 10 was tabled, so we're going to remove it from the agenda. Till the next meeting.
Go ahead, Ms. Kears.
Okay, Patricia Kears. I have a question. Resolution 18-3, a non-fair and open contract. Why are we not doing these as fair and open contracts?
This is for the fencing?
Yes.
Because of the amount we generally get, when it's under a certain amount, we generally get two to three quotes, and this was the cheapest quote.
Did you get two to three quotes?
Rather than going out through a whole bidding process.
So you got two to three quotes for this?
Yeah, they had got at least two quotes for us.
And what's the amount it has to be under?
I don't recall at the top of my head.
Okay, and 18-4?
Oh, wait a minute, this may be, we may have used the... Let me correct this. We may have, I don't know if we used the... You know what, I'm going to get an answer for you right now. So just put on hold what I just said.
Okay.
Is this for the fence?
Yeah.
Was this a capital item?
Yeah, it was a capital item, but I don't remember if we got two quotes or we used a vendor, stay contracted vendor. So I'm going to find that out right now.
Okay, then my next question is on 18-4. An additional equipment for $608,000. Was this expected?
I was going to say, I'm scheduled to move it, but I think you probably have the right answers.
Go ahead, answer some of the questions.
So the reason that we put the additional amount on there was to increase the amount of equipment needed to complete Phase 1. There was X amount of meters that were ordered, and for billing purposes, we have to... There's, try to how to explain it. There's different zones that we bill for. Well, in order to complete one zone, we needed more equipment.
And these are for the smart meters?
Yes, for the water meters.
Yep.
Okay, and then... On petitions and letters 9-1. When was this, when was Mr. Smith hired for the city? Was it like in the last couple of weeks?
Can you say that again?
Mr. Smith, who resigned from the zoning board? When was he hired for the city? And was he hired in code enforcement? Or inspections?
This is just clerical, he was never... This is just clerical mistakes that were being corrected right now for...
So he was never on the zoning board?
He was on the zoning board as an alternate.
As an alternate?
I... Was he?
He was the vice chair.
Sir, vice chair.
He had to resign when he took her position in the city.
When did he take...
He sent a letter, he took position in code enforcement, he couldn't do both.
Right, when did he become code enforcement?
I don't remember the date, but he submitted, after we had a conversation with Mr. Russell, he submitted a letter, an email. I guess, I don't know which way he did it. He said, I quit the zoning work, and he actually submitted this law.
Correct, clerical.
Okay, and... That's it, you're going to get the answer?
I already had the answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, two quotes?
Yes.
And is there a certain amount it has to be under?
Well, not a certain amount, we have to go out for bid. So I don't remember, recall exactly what that number is, and I don't want to guess because last night...
No, you don't want to guess, that's correct. Okay. All right, thank you.
I was going to take a guess, but I think it's 44,000.
Yeah, it's the QPA, it's like 47,000.
Where's the QPA, it's 44,000?
Mrs. Kears, Mrs. Kears, I know you walked away from the microphone, from the podium, that's okay. I just want to let you know, the letter was written March 5th.
Due diligence. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Presentations seen none. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on bill payment. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Petitions and letters.
Oh. We have a motion to receive and file a letter from William Smith resigning from the zoning board of adjustment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in second on petition's letter, item number one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Petitions and letters, the second item is a motion to receive and file a letter from Mayor Romanek reappointing John Romanek and Veronica Chaney as members of the Shade Tree Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2029.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on petition letters, item number two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Abstain.
We have a motion to receive and file a letter from Mayor Romanek appointing Commissioner Carol Cosbun as a member of the Board of Directors of the Urban Enterprise Zone.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Motion in second on petition's letter, item number three. Comments? Yes, welcome Carol to the Millville Vinyl and UEZ Board. And thank you for joining, Ms. Cosbun. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Reports of Commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes, first I'd like to make a motion to receive and file a fire and EMS department reports for the month of February 2025.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second for Commissioner Hewitt to receive and file fire and EMS reports of the month of February of this year. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Comment wise, first, most important. I would like to thank and recognize Officers Mike Phillips and Officer Tony Delphinato. Yesterday, they was, was their last day of serving this city. A full career as police officers on the streets of City of Millville. They have both resigned. Best regards to them. Everybody knows, I know the people in my departments. They did a great job, they served the city for a long time. Kudos, enjoy, go on with your life. Thank you, fellas. With that said, Randolph Avenue Bridge, we all know is out. It was supposed to be a short term right now, we're stretched out till Friday of this week was the last word. Who knows what that's going to be? I'm not going to say, it's not going to open Friday, or it is going to open Friday. It's a mess, folks, so try and just plan ahead a little bit. Usually not even a 10-minute ride for me to get here tonight. I forgot about it. And it was almost 20 minutes to get here. Hopefully it's a bump in the road that happens quick and gets done. Look at it this way, we'll call it a fire drill for when they start working on the Main Street Bridge. With that, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt, and yes, I forgot about it as well, coming here to City Hall. I gave myself time. Commissioner Sui, go ahead.
Sure, so we're getting ready for the spring and summer season. So in the last two weeks, the Parks Department has launched the playgrounds at Union Lake and Corson Park. And last week, the department changed, we changed our progress on how we hold our toolbox talks. So it worked out really good. The Assistant Maintenance Supervisor Ed Gandy did a great job, and the way they did it, and all the employees were engaged, they were all talking together, trading ideas, exchanging methods of the way they did do things, and it was a great thing to see them do that. Upcoming events, this Saturday, April 5th at 11:00 a.m., we're holding our grand opening of the new playground equipment at Union Lake Park. We hope you can join us as we celebrate the new equipment and all those that helped make it happen. There were many, many donations for that equipment, it was a great thing. The egg-tastic Easter celebration will take place on Saturday, April 12th, at the Tim Shannon Sports Clubplex located at 2 North High, yeah, Sharp Street, behind Lakeside Middle School. The event will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and the egg hunt will be at 11:00 a.m. sharp. There'll be plenty of fun for your children, 12 years old and under. Make sure you bring a bag or basket to collect your eggs. If you have any questions about the events, please contact the Recreation Office at 856-825-7000, extension 7394. So I'm extremely happy to say that the Millville Vinyl and UEZ Board has approved approximately $312,000 to pay the Sheriff's Department to patrol our UEZ zone. Now, the next step for this is to take it to the state to get the state approval before we work out all the details, right? So we're waiting a shared services agreement that the county is presently working on, and we'll need that so that we can exchange the money. And I want to thank Sheriff Mike Donato, the Holly City Development Corporation, especially Heather Santoro, for their expeditious work on this, as well as Ross Hoffman and Kirk Hewitt for their input, as well as Susan Quinones for making the nuts and bolts of the finances possible. Now, you know, this commission and the public should keep in mind how this is being paid for. It's through UEZ money. That means money that is obtained through the UEZ zone. And not our local property taxes. Keep in mind that a lack of police presence and the perception in the urban enterprise zone is a high primary come up in surveys. When the Holly City Development Corporation does these surveys, that perception exists, and it exists that there's not enough police presence. And this should go a long way to remedy that. Now, you should, you should also be able to think critically about how the city is able, is able to afford this even through UEZ. It's fairly simple. The first year of UEZ available funds were approximately $1 million. This year, they were approximately $4 million, allowing us to do more projects and revitalize our urban enterprise zone. So you should ask yourself, how did we go from $1 million to $4 million? Smart spending programs in the zone and marketing. Most of that marketing came through our webpages, Facebook pages, and the many videos that were produced by Bill Horn. So soon a proposal using UEZ funds for marketing will come before you for a vote, rather than the use of taxpayers, which we did not approve. I hope you consider the positive effect that our expenditures on marketing have had so far, and not just in the UEZ zone, unfortunately, we won't be able to market other areas with UEZ funding, but the positive effect on economic development. And that we don't make another mistake of discontinuing the program we had in place. So this time, the funds will come from the UEZ, so hopefully we collectively will make a better decision. I think... That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Cosbun, go ahead.
Hey, streets and roads, lot of tires out there collected, 18 appliances. Street sweeping tickets were written, 289. Potholes are being filled, I know right now there's a lot of them. You can go on the website, and there is a form you can fill out. Am I correct, Mr. Southernland? Yes, wear it, yeah, or call. 825-87000, extension 7388. They did, the center concrete island on 15th Street Gate has been removed. Entrance to Canal Street boat ramp has been stoned and graded. Leaves are being collected. You're going to make one pass through the city. Residents can bag their loose leaves all year around and put them out with their trash. And you can start putting out your brush beginning April the 15th through the 30th, and they're going to start collecting that brush on May the 1st. Recycling. 21 damaged carts, 17 missing or stolen. Residents purchased 17. There's 28 notices of violation were issued in March. Let's see, we also have, the audit of the recycling routes have started, and the amount of contamination is way too much. Please be careful about how you put things in the trash, because we, that tipping fee will go up if they have to take care of that. The ACUA has been instructed not to pick up recycling carts that have contaminated trash in them. You can get a list that are acceptable curb site on our website. We're at our Streets and Roads office at 4 South 15th Street. Uh, let's see, 2, recycling, you can bring your batteries, your old TVs, et cetera, you can bring them down. If you don't know what is recyclable and what is not, please go for Recycle Coach, it's an app that you can put on your phone, and details are on the city website. And just a reminder, the Recycling and Clean Community Department, we're going to have a booth at the Eco Fair on Saturday, May the 3rd, at Wheaton Arts. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Cosbun. Vice Mayor Watson?
As Commissioner Hewitt touched on, the Brandish Avenue Bridge required emergency repair. Thank you to our engineering team, getting ahold of the county and the contractor to get out there and get that underway. As you stated, looks like maybe Friday or Saturday, if all goes well.
Hopefully.
Yep. Well 15 and 16 testing are underway. Those wells are located south of us on Ware Avenue. AC Schultes is still working on Well 2A with the oversight of our engineering department. Engineering is drafting a New Jersey DPD permit modification for monitoring Well 18 for the sodium hypochlorite bulk liquid storage tank that will remain on site. For the Pleasant Drive improvements, plan and specs are finalized, bid and award by May 2025. Construction is estimated for the summer of 2025. At the pre-construction meeting for the 49 Bridge, a date, a start date was not provided. Keep you updated on that.
That's all I got. Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Just heard briefly from the public, Brandish Avenue is a county road. Just like, everything, not every city road in the City of Millville is a city road. But, yes, a little emergency repairs, I do think, I'm still on board with project updates from the county, and they said Friday, as far as my knowledge, as well. Fifth floor has been very busy with construction, zoning, housing, and code enforcement, many, as well as multiple items dealing with CBDG matters. There was 102 violation notices issued with 212 violations cited. 271 rental unit inspections were performed. The next zoning board meeting will be happening on April 3rd at 6:00 p.m., located here in the chambers, and the next planning board meeting will happen on April 14th at 6:30 p.m. here in the chambers. On April 16th at 7:00 p.m., Vineland and Millville men's baseball teams will be playing under the lights at the Millville Babe Ruth League. Announcements to begin at 6:15, free entry. The Snack Shaft and Smoke House will be open. Thank you to the Millville Board of Education and Vineland Board of Education for putting this together. I am looking forward to that great event, and I hope we have a great support for Millville's high school boys and our city always succeeding against the city of Vineland. Other than that, I look forward to the many multiple events that we do have coming this month in, of April, along with the events that Commissioner Sui has read, we also have the startup of American Little League and girls, Millville Girl's Softball, which will be happening later this month. Ordinances in the second reading.
We have an ordinance approving and authorizing an application to hold a coin drop for the Millville Police Athletic League on June 15th, 2025, and June 16th, 2025, at the intersections of Buckshutam Road and Cedarville Road.
Move the ordinance on second reading.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in second on ordinance, second reading, item number one. There's a public hearing. We now open the public hearing up. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this. Good, bad, indifferent, seeing nobody, I will close public hearing on this ordinance. Any comments of Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
We have an ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 52, Police Regulations, Article 4, Disorderly Conduct, Section 52-13, enumeration of actions constituting disorderly conduct to prohibit the use of videotaping or audiotaping equipment in certain city offices and workspaces designated as non-public forums or limited public forums.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on ordinance in the second reading, item number two. I'll open a public comment on this. If anybody from the public would like to comment on ordinance in the second reading, item number two, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Comments of Commissioners?
Yeah, I have them. So I've thought a lot about this ordinance, and I've also thought about how difficult it is for people to come in here and get things done as it is. So, you know, I'm looking at it, and I really don't think it's going to accomplish a whole lot. I don't think it'll be effectively enforced. Quite frankly, we can lock doors and keep people out of areas without the ordinance, which is what we have attempted to do now, and we have even addressed some of the employee security concerns, which, when you walk on a floor and the door's propped open and unlocked, it's supposed to be locked, and you put in Dutch doors so that people can't walk down the hall, and they just leave the doors open, it really doesn't do anything for that either. And quite frankly, we need a balance, that, you know, open government works best, at least in my opinion. And quite frankly, we need to balance that. There's always going to be, I don't even know what the proper term is, for the people to come in here and raise hell for no good reason other than to get attention on YouTube. They're always going to be here, and they'll probably be back even if we pass this ordinance. In fact, the issue would pretty much die down again until we brought the ordinance up. Then the emails started again, the phone calls started again, and I'm sure whatever way we do tonight, they'll get the emails and the phone calls again tomorrow. So, you know, we act like a bunch of neutered sheep, while those that want to disrupt act like a bunch of rabid raccoons. So that's just the way it is, that's the way the world is, that's how it is. We've already passed one unenforced, apparently useless ordinance about camping in our parks. It does nothing, we don't enforce it. Quite frankly, we've had fires lit there, and it's just senseless. So it doesn't make any sense to add ordinances if we know they're not going to be enforced. It only builds contempt for the law. It irritates the public when we don't enforce them, it irritates the police officers when there are senseless ordinances. And you know what? You know, the prime example would be the unregistered cycles and four-wheelers on the road. So I just think about this from, and ask yourself, when you see that, if you get mad at the governor and the Attorney General, don't let us take care of that problem, or you say, hey, the cops aren't doing nothing about it. Most of the time, you think the cops aren't doing anything about it, that's what I will wager, which is wrong. It's an unnecessary burden upon them, and I don't think we should make that burden any bigger for the police or for the people that work here. And that's my opinion on that.
I would like to comment. The two ordinance that you spoke of, you know, their attempts, you know, to make the situation better, you know, to do nothing doesn't fix anything, but at least we made an attempt to try to make it better. You know, this ordinance isn't to keep people out, in my opinion. This ordinance is, you know, to be put in place to protect the privacy of those trying to conduct business within the city. You know, people coming here, you know, dealing vital statistics...
Statistics.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I got it, too.
So basically, what we're doing is we're putting reasonable limitations on access points of the building. This way, when a phone call comes in, nobody's getting recorded. When people are here trying to talk to a clerk about, you know, regular business, they're not being recorded. I think having a camera shoved in my face would probably deter me from talking and trying to get what I'm trying to get done. I don't, this isn't to, you know, stop people from coming, it's just basically to have something in place to prevent, again, protect those trying to do business within the city.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Cancel roll call.
You know, when we first got in, when this commission first got in office, granted, it was very different than it is now. One of my first concerns where I used to have to come in and out of here a lot was the security of the building. One of the first things I tried to do as Public Safety Director was somewhat go back to COVID protocol. Now, we're there down on the first floor, people can't just walk in and access this building. Now, we're there. I realize that right now, we are down and we are hurting and on the third floor with the clerks, and I thank them for what they're doing. I had a meeting with the clerks when I first got in office, second month, I think it was, and every one of the clerks know where to go if something goes wrong in this building on that third floor. Am I right, Joanna? You know where to go? Everybody knows where to go on that floor that's left when we talked.
I'm going to the vault.
Going to the vault. I'm not going to tell them, tell everybody exactly what we decided, but the girls on the third floor know where to go. Should it be that they have to worry about that? No, no, it shouldn't be. Is there an easy fix without possibly getting this city into a legal situation? Because these auditors and stuff, they live for cities to do something wrong. They live for employees to, what they consider the auditors get out of control, so that they can sue the city. Because they know that municipalities are sitting ducks for lawsuits and things like this. I spent a couple hours up on the fifth, sixth floor the other day because I had gotten a phone call from a concerned resident. As far as I'm concerned, the sixth floor is pretty safe. The girls up there can get into secure offices, and the doors don't even have windows on them. After the time I spent up there the other day, those girls and the engineer, everybody up there, knows what I want them to do if something goes down. Don't interact with these people. These people look to tantalize employees. They look to challenge them and get them to challenge. First floor is secure with what I call COVID protocol. Third floor can very easily be secured, and I tried it and it didn't happen with one thing, and I keep saying it, go back to COVID protocol. Now, I know that the girls... Now, I know that the girls that are on the third floor now, the clerks, are busy doing jobs that are not theirs. They're carrying the weight. It's as simple as a telephone. Secure that second set of doors with a buzzer. I came in here plenty of times during COVID protocol. I picked up the telephone, somebody answered, I told them where I needed to go, what I needed to do, and I was buzzed through into this building. Uh, I know that we've reached out to our labor attorney and, uh, it's not really recommended that we, uh, give these people that make a living by doing what they do with these audits and stuff and YouTube. I'm troubled with this. I I'm troubled with the fact that we can't make a simple little investment and secure that front door that you all walked through today. That's the easiest way out. That's all I'm going to say, and, uh, I guess we all vote.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
No.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
No.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
We have an ordinance approving a utility easement agreement with Atlantic City Electric Company pertaining to city-owned property designated as Block four eighty-nine, Lot four.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second on ordinance in the second reading, item number three. There's a public hearing on this. Anybody would like to come to the podium, please state your name, concerns. Seeing no one on the public, I will close public hearing. Comments, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance four is an ordinance to approve the application and agreement submitted by Livoni R E. Management Corp. for a five-year exemption or abatement from taxation pursuant to Article one of Chapter sixty-five of the municipal code for the project known as Livoni Meat Slicing Facility located at six fifty Bogdan Boulevard.
Make motion on ordinance on the second reading, item number four.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second on ordinance in the second reading of item number four. I will now open public hearing on item number four. Anybody from the public? See nobody. I will close public hearing. Comments, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Ordinance of the first we didn't see none. Resolutions, please.
Resolution authorizing the submission submission of the recycling tonnage grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection with the monies received from the recycling tonnage grant being uh, deposited in in a dedicated recycling trust fund to be used solely for the purpose of recycling.
Make a motion.
Second emotion.
Got a motion in the second on resolution, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number two, is a resolution canceling tax sale certificate twenty-five dash zero zero one three eight for one oh five River Drive.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second on resolution, item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution three is a resolution awarding a non-fair and open contract purchase order to Martinez Contractors LLC to repair the fence at the Millville soccer field in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Move the resolution.
Second it.
Certification of funds there?
Oh, yeah. Certification of funds, any amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Signed by the CFO, Susan Quinones.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution four is a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to a non-fair and open contract slash purchase order with Core and Main L P. For additional equipment for phase one invoices for six hundred and eight thousand dollars with a new not to exceed total amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seventy dollars.
Make motion, and with that I have certification of funds in the amount of six hundred and eight thousand dollars with a new not to exceed of one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seventy dollars, signed by our Chief Financial Officer, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second, resolution, item number four. Any comments?
Again, this is to increase the equipment for the first phase of the meter upgrade. Um, we need enough meters to complete the, uh, billing cycle for the zone.
You. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution five is a resolution authorizing a purchase order contract for a fire hose and equipment from M E S. Service Company LLC in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars.
Make motion, and with that I have certification of funds in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Signed by Susan Quinones. Second emotion.
We have a motion in second on resolution, item number five. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution six is a resolution appointing Lawrence Fawcett as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator to fill Michael Lippincott's unexpired term expiring on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Make motion. Second emotion.
One of the zoo. I'm going to retire. We've got a motion, second resolution, item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution seven is a resolution authorizing the resident of Block two thirty-six, Lot one thirty-four at thirteen twenty-eight Canal Street to construct a one thousand gallon concrete septic closer to the right of way of line than N J A C. Seven colon nine A dash four point three specifies as ten feet.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second on resolution, item number seven. Any comments? Yes, I would just like to thank Ms. Garten for the engineering department working with this gentleman. I've, uh, this gentleman has reached out to me and gave her, uh, wonder wonderful kudos on assisting him with this project. Um, because as you can see, it's a little complicated. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution eight is a resolution authorizing adjustments to the tax and utility records.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution nine is a resolution authorizing special assessment of municipal liens for certain properties due to expenses incurred by the city of Millville relating to board and sec- secure plus administrative fees in accordance with Chapter eleven, Article six of the municipal code.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion in second on resolution, item number nine. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Okay, resolution ten was tabled.
New business.
We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign letters of support to Equals Energy LLC to participate in the community solar energy program at the following locations. One thousand one North Tenth Street, ninety-two Reese Road, and four oh one South Third Street.
Make a motion on new business, item number one.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second. Any comments?
Yes. I know we've done this several times before. So I started doing a little dating. So if you're one of the ones that participate with the community solar energy program, you make out pretty good with this. If you're not one of the ones that participate, you see, these rates are going to go lower. And the people that don't participate, they're going to make up for this somewhere. And guess where they're going to make up with it? For the people that don't participate. And that was my interpretation when I started reading into that. I could be wrong, but I'm not supporting any more of these until I find out for sure if I'm right or wrong. So you guys do what you want. I mean, you could support this one and then do the research because I'm sure more will pop up. But, uh, you might want to check into that because I know I've supported them in the past. I don't believe I fully understood them in the past. And as I read more and more, it just doesn't look right to me. I get it. You want to be green. You want to do this. You want to do that. But I don't know.
I basically just seen it as a way to, you know, assist those that are paying taxes to the city, you know, big places, you know?
Yeah, well, it it is, it assists people to participate, but the people that doesn't participate.
Right.
Then it do- doesn't assist them, so I don't know. I mean, if you guys want to do it this time, okay, but we better have a better answer next time we vote on this. Uh, I'm going to agree, and, uh, actually, I think it's time we start looking at a couple of these ones that we've approved. Are they going or again, I, I mean, we're, everybody that's sitting here, everybody's watching this or even looking off Facebook knows what's happened with electric. It's going to happen with gas too, folks. There are two major players that control our utilities in this state. And they're connected to the B P U and the and the B P U is connected to politicians. Do not believe that your electric and stuff is going to go down. Buckle up, people. It'll be a mumpy ride. I I I I'm very thankful that I made the investment in a solar situation that is mine. Uh, because it's going to get rough. I I feel it for for the folks that I feel it for everybody. This is, this is going to be terrible. The the delivery fees that I'm seeing for natural gas and such. But there's a, there's only one game in town and town is the entire state, folks. It's not like we get to choose. Uh, I I want to see things like this because they add to an already taxed utility service. That's that's why I'm at war. With that, I know there's not much more I can say. I'm hoping that it does do a little bit of damage control. Mr. Mayor, I will look into that further for the next time this comes up so that way I can hand down.
As far as I, when I got this, uh, come across me, as far as I deemed it as, you know, these properties wanted to contribute to this program and this program needed this to happen. Okay. We vote. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Public comment portion. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address your concerns. Please limit your concerns to approximately five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Uh, my name is Steve Volkerd and I am the Director of Solar Development for Equals Energy. And I thank you for taking the time and discussing that, uh, and the the, uh, motion for the letters of recommendation. I should have spoken earlier. I should have jumped up and I should know that. I was a councilman for ten years and a school board member for ten years, and I do appreciate everything that you do. Um, because it's 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 an around-the-clock job. Nonetheless, um, to answer your question, Mr. Mr. Sui, if you don't mind.
No, I'd I would like to.
Sure. The the community solar program, I'm sure you've you've looked into it and we are very excited about coming to to Millville. Equals Energy and and its companies have developed landfills throughout the state, uh, and in South Jersey, and we are now part of the, and that's all part of the community solar program. That with this program, and I'll just give a little elevator pitch on it or explanation, is the power that's generated, we are leasing three rooftops here in, um, at the three addresses here in in Millville. And between those three properties, we're generating five megawatts of power, okay, calculated. We've we've done preliminary designs and in order for us to put our application, June first, to the, uh, Bureau of Public Utilities, we need to have the letter, among other things, uh, the the need to have this letter of support. Um, and I do appreciate you again taking the time and I know you've you've, um, done this in the past. That this power does go back to Atlantic City Electric. Okay, not to the property, not these three warehouses that we're talking about with what's on the agenda. Um, what that power, what that does, it's it's this, we're in year four of Governor Murphy's, uh, community solar energy program. And that power goes to, we we've all been paying, as long as I've been paying electric builders, that communal benefits charge. Okay, and they've been kind of collecting it, uh, the utility companies. And basically what happened is the 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 B P U now says this that some of those monies have to go towards community solar. And what that, what the what the community solar program does is it allows people within the community or or that power company or the county, uh, that they can get a twenty, somewhere between twenty and thirty percent discount. I don't know if you read that, Mr. Sui or not. Uh, so each, just to give you a ballpark, you know, one megawatt of power that's generated through the consultant, through the community solar program equals about two hundred homes that we can provide that for. And those are, those are homes are, if if it's, if, when I say home, I mean, you have an electric meter. Okay, uh, for low, low and moderate income, okay, that those, uh, for people that, A, can't afford solar and they want to participate in it. And I think, Mr. Hewitt, you 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 have solar panels on your property? Right. So yours is what they call a net metering. They run yours and I'm sure you see how much you save and then how much.
I have a field. I don't have them on my roof and I'm not renting.
Good for you. Okay, exactly. And you, I'm sure you look to see it's a game to see how much the this goes goes back to the utility company and all. I would I'd be doing that too on my phone, watching that. So there you go. Like I said. So you know when to turn the TV off and all that and so, uh, so, uh, as as I was saying, so that, so it's part of the the program for people that rent or people that have homes that are surrounded by trees and can't put the solar panels or their homes face the wrong way. You know, Mr. Hewitt, you got to be faced the right way. If it's if you're facing north. Right. So, so it takes all those, all those, um, into account. So I don't know if I, hopefully I I answered your questions and we, as as mentioned, we are looking forward. We're going to come through with the permits because we we, this is one of those things that we need for the B P U from the municipality, uh, this letter of support.
So so I do have one question. You said it'll service basically two hundred homes, right, at a reduced rate?
Correct.
Correct. So the, uh, Exelon or Atlantic City Electric is buying your power from you.
Correct.
Correct. So for the people that don't have it, you know, Atlantic City Electric's still going to need the money to make their infrastructure, generate their power.
Sure.
So what about everybody else? It, you, I mean, you say it doesn't negatively affect their rates, but if Exelon or Atlantic City Electric isn't getting the same amount of money, they're going to make it up somewhere. So you any idea how that if?
I can't, I can't speak for the utility.
Well, I know they're going to make it up. You know they're going to make it up.
That, like I said, this
Their cost doesn't change.
The seed money for this comes from that societal benefits charge that we've been charged. I heard my father asking about this in the seventies. So they, uh, you know, whatever, whatever that amount is based. So that's where, that's where this goes and it is funded by the state. So it is, it is protected. It's not to then pass it on to.
One other question for those that may want to participate, how do they apply to be part of the community solar program?
Well, as you said, we're we're not like what Mr. Hewitt had done and gone for his for his home. We are, we'll say, a commercial grade, but larger grade. So we do landfills, which you cannot build anything on. Uh, this is, this is a great alternative to it because they rest on top. We don't, we're not going to put piles into it because you're not allowed to, uh, or or brownfields or historic fills, uh, or large warehouses. And we, uh, just to to tell you, yeah, I, my criteria starts at at ware- warehouses that are around sixty thousand square feet.
I'm talking about the consumer though.
Thank you.
The consumer participates.
Okay. Sir, can you wrap it up in a minute?
Absolutely, yeah. So 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 that part, there's a subscriber, uh, entity to that, which will come about. Where where folks, cit- ordinary citizens can sign up for that. And there's no credit check. There's no, I don't even think you need a driver's license. You just need to come in with your bill that you are a ratepayer to that. So that that's how you qualify. That's the, and you're right. That's that's the great part about that.
Could you just, I don't know, maybe, I know you only have a couple of seconds. So if you could get the information of like, say, I wanted to apply for it. How I would do that, we can give it to the community.
Correct, yeah. Well, no, right, and and that will happen on a smaller scale. Here within 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 Millville, but you can access that through the the website, the the community solar program.
Okay.
Again, folks, I I appreciate it and I'm, I'll stick around if you have any further questions and I I apologize for for going.
You're fine. Thank you, Steve.
Tall people. Uh, Joe Southern, I'm here as the coordinator of the Millville Municipal Alliance Committee now. Uh, the, uh, the ball teams. The, uh, the ball teams are starting back up, and we'll be supporting them. We're supporting some programs in the school, and we had, uh, the most students we've been able to take up to the New Jersey State Elks Peer Leadership Conference was this year. And Joe, I'd like to thank you for that, because if you hadn't, uh, told us how to get the funds to be able to take those students there, we wouldn't have been able to do it. And, uh.
Glad I could help.
Myself, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the students that went up appreciated it. Curtain, Steve, uh, I, uh, I wanna thank yous for, uh, and Susan for working with us to get the grant to bring speakers into the, to school. Again, that's another prevention program, and, you know, we appreciate all that, because our, our governor decided that he needed sixty-eight percent of our money for something besides our use. And, uh, without these programs, we wouldn't be able to do it. So, uh, thank yous very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Southern.
Rick Cobb, Millville, how you doing? The, the grant, the three hundred and twelve thousand, uh, grant we're getting for the sheriff's department, I don't know how you're planning on doing, are they doing nighttime? Cause they can't do.
There's gonna be hours set up and certain periods of time.
Cause, just breaking it down real quickly, if we had four officers a day, seven days a week, that would cover two hundred and two weeks.
When we broke it down, we, we broke it all down, and it would be for a period of one year.
I was gonna say.
I don't wanna get into the details of where and when the coverage is gonna be in a public forum, and, uh, Heather Santoro actually has all the information that she presented to the Millville Vineland UEZ Board. So you can certainly call her and get that information directly from her.
If there is any excess funds, where do they go, do you know?
Well, we also have, we have seventy thousand we put aside for Millville police officers to actually patrol in the, uh, Millville UEZ. So seventy something, right? But because of the shortage of officers, right, and lack of personnel, we figured this is a stopgap matter until we could get people through the academy. And that then we can, you know, go back to having a fully staffed police department. There probably isn't gonna be any excess, it's probably all gonna get used up. If, if you talk to Heather, she broke it all down.
Okay. Because, uh, you're talking about security, right, for four years, and hate to say nothing, but nothing was really done in security in four years, right? Security guards, right, and the metal detectors, just to use another city, for example. Twenty-five, uh, dollars an hour for two people for fifty-two weeks is thirteen thousand dollars, that, that's it. And we can't afford thirteen thousand in the four years you've been trying to get security for this building? That's a problem to me, right? Cause you knew about the problem.
Unfortunately, I agree.
How much did you say?
Thirteen thousand dollars, right?
Well, you said eight at twenty-five dollars, eight, eight and a half hours a day.
I said eight, but, yeah, eight and a half. Give them a lunch break. How much is it? It might be.
Big.
Twenty-five dollars an hour, forty hours a week, that's, is that fifty thousand dollars per person?
Fifty thousand, I'm sorry. But still, fifty thou, big? That's big, right?
It's big for the department, you know the department, Rick.
What department? I'm talking about City Hall.
I know.
Right.
No, it's big for the department to fund that.
So you haven't found fifty thousand dollars anywhere in the budget?
Besides that, we actually have police in this building. One in the eternal fair's office, and downstairs on the first floor, there's police in the building already.
And that's what we're using to help the people coming in and wanting.
Something happens, but, you know, we did, we did do, uh, in security improvements, and I'll give you an example, I'll name the floor, I don't care. So the fifth floor, we built a wall, we put in Dutch doors, we made a glass door, we put a lock on it. You know what happens? You go up there, the door's propped open, the employees don't lock the door, there are other security measures we put in place, the employees really don't follow them. And I did security for a long time, you know that. Unless you're gonna put an armed guard outside this door, you are not gonna stop a determined individual from getting in here and doing what he wants to do.
Which is a great idea, though, right?
Yeah, it'd be great if we did.
Absolutely.
But I don't see it happen, I don't see you spending the money to do it, but as the budget comes out, you'll see why. Second of all, to go to the COVID protocols, pick up the phone, call, come inside, well, nobody knows who's calling. If I say I'm John Smith, and I'm here to go to the construction department, you're gonna let me in?
Absolutely.
And then what?
Yep. And that, well, I know from personal experience, that first floor shutting the door, they, they unlocked it every single time it was locked when I was down there.
Yeah, that has changed now.
Right.
Yeah, cause you, your office is right there, so yes, you.
I know, and I locked it, and then they would unlock it.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying.
They're, they're the same people that are complaining about the security, they're the same people that are violating security procedures.
I, I just feel like the money isn't as big as it seems when we say it. That's just my concern.
Uh, the only thing I see, and I say, and I, I'm pretty frank, uh, in January, there's gonna be somebody else sitting here with that label on their job, and they're gonna know what's available. And, right.
It's priorities, right?
Priority is.
Priorities, right.
Priority is the streets and the residents.
Okay. I'm, I'm just saying, everything can be done if it's, if it's a priority.
All has a level.
Yep.
You know, and I will point out, if you go into, uh, Ocean First Bank, we have more security here than they have there, just in case you, you don't wanna rob a bank or something.
No, no, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Seeing no one else, I have closed, closed public comment portion. Closing comments of commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt.
Uh, lot of conversation today. Good conversation from the residents that spoke, thank you all. Without getting too far back on my heels, like, or forward on my skis, there are limits, believe me, I have taken my beatings in trying to figure out things, uh, in my departments. There are limits. Folks, you know how we fix those limits? You don't wanna hear it. Taxes got to increase. We are working on getting patrol officers into the academy. We're working on it hard. We're gonna get as many as we can into the academies that are coming, but then it's up to them. Once we get them in there, it's all on the candidates. Yeah, I, I've seen us do, do academies, and the average is half of whatever the number is that we put in to make it through. I'm glad to get that half. We got three more coming out pretty soon, but like today, I mentioned, we lost two, but we didn't lose them like we lose them to other communities. They served the city, they served their time, and they've earned their retirement. I cannot do anything but wish them well, just like any of the rest of my departments, fire or rescue. It comes time to retire, it's time to retire. Get on out of here, you deserve it. I wish that we had an open bank account, you know, I come in here thinking we had an open bank account, cause I spent so many times at that microphone, many years. When you get here and you get the key, even employees think they know that there's that pot of gold that I referred to, to the prior commission in the middle of High Street, it's not there. When you get the keys to the place and you get to see what's going on, then you really know. I wish I had the answer. I do have the answer, but nobody that's listening to this right now or watching it wants to hear that answer. Takes money to provide services. Uh, with that, hopefully everybody can adjust to this detour around the bridge. Like I say, it's in preparation for this bridge, it's in preparation for schooner landing bridge coming out and go south on Second Street. They're gonna take that whole entire bridge out, it's gonna be out for a while. I just found that out in the EMS meeting. That's in the near future. Other than that, thank you, everybody, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Kosabun.
No, I just want to tell the two officers that are retiring, good luck, and also, third floor, keep up the good work, I know how hard they're working.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Commissioner Suie.
Okay, so because I have a sense of humor. And I have been referred to as the.
Do we need to buckle up?
Well, we're gonna find out if you guys have one. So. So, I appreciate nobody referring to me as the former vice mayor tonight. So I have ordered a shirt that says, Joe Suie, former vice mayor on it, which I, I will wear in the future to the meetings. Because, you know, two meetings ago, one person referred to me as the former vice mayor, and I figured I was gonna start referring to him as Roscoe P. Coltrane, if any of you guys know who that is. And the other guy that did it, I was gonna refer to him as Saul Goodman, so you can figure out who that was. And with that, April Fools.
I do want your shirt.
I do want your shirt.
Long and hard through that one, too much thinking.
That was a lot of thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Suie, Vice Mayor Watson. Go ahead, follow up that one.
I probably have a good one, but I'll leave that one alone. Nah, it's okay. Uh, I actually have another funny story, and it's relative to one of the officers that are retiring. So I started off the city of Millville as my first full-time gig, uh, was parking enforcement, I used to have to mark the tires on High Street. And, uh, I used to sit at the front office and, you know, um, welcome people and direct them to whatever floor they needed to go to, and also log traffic tickets. So, Del Fannato, his nickname to me was crayon, because I used to carry around that chalk stick. But where I was going with it, I just wanna congratulate Officer Phillips and, um, Del Fannato on their retirement. Thank you for your service, appreciate it. And I'd rather close with that. Thank you. We are fishing, but thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Equals-dash-energy.com, sir, if you'd like to make a presentation, I'm more than welcome to have you make a presentation at the beginning, instead of when we all wanna go home. Uh, you're fine. Um, and I'll just read the quick, right on their website, quote, Equals Energy strives to provide all individuals and communities access to the benefits of renewable energy, regardless of household type, income level, or other historical barriers that have existed, end quote. So, quick look on their link, they are state-funded, talking about all the Governor Murphy's wonderful initiatives, that is sarcasm. I thank those that came, uh, Steve, Joe, Rick, Ms. Kier's talking during the regular meeting, um, and towards the end, thank you for the public for engaging, uh, us up here. We are, we are the community here together, and we are the city of Millville, so let's keep on making the city of Millville better each and every single day. We, uh, literally, if you're, we've, we got some roadblocks set up, um, but that'll soon be away, and then there'll be another roadblock probably setting up somewheres else. But, uh, all for improvements and for the safety and security of the residents here in the city of Millville, so I thank each and every one of you here, I thank each and every one of you watching online and on TV. You all have a great and wonderful evening and a good night. Motion for adjournment.
Make a motion?
Second.